This conference will now be recorded.
And I'll be right back.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hi, Mayor.
Today is really focused on two topics for the work session. One is presentations we're about to hear from the Honorable Mr. McCannan. And then Kate is going to give us the benefit of some of the work that she's done that I think we'll all be pleased to receive. So with that said, who do we have on? We have Jason. Peter's on, I understand.
Yep.
Jason, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Art will not be joining us. He said he's already been exposed to both of these presentations, and I believe that's probably true. So Jim, I'll give you the floor.
Yes, I think, thank you, Mayor. Mary Jane's there as well, and we might have a few more of our committee members. Quick overview, what we're going to talk about today is called LEAF, and it stands for Local Enhancement Advancement Fund. As all of you may be aware, Mary Jane and I, back in 18, really at the end of 17, we really got our heads together about how can we generate some funding for community programs that would enhance the quality of life for residents and the quality of place for visitors. We looked around the country, and we came across a couple of, maybe only two or three programs, where dedicated occupancy taxes were put into funds specifically for this. So we started investigating that, and actually, in the beginning of 18, I think, Mayor, we had you, and at that time Supervisor Robie Pallidi, we sort of gave you a little bit of a heads up on what we were looking at. And I think we got the indication to move forward, if I recall correctly. And then we started talking to our lodging facilities to, you know, to increase occupancy taxes. Number one, you have to get the support of the hotel community. So that was our first effort. And, you know, across the board, not across the board, but the dominant amount of the lodging facilities were quite supportive of a program that would generate some direct funds back to the community, the funds generated by visitors to the area. So we started the process then, first with the town board, because the town board is the contact to the county, and all occupancy taxes in New York State can be counties, or cities can do occupancy taxes. So we went to the county, and probably over, it was about a one-year process with the county, that we got their support moving forward. And what's unique, the state-enabling legislation for the Essex County occupancy tax was created back in 2000. And it was, it's very unique in the state, because how that has been, how that was set up is that 95% of it has to go back to what's called the TPA, Tourism Promotion Agency, and that is Roost in our case. And, you know, we were the ones that led the charge originally 2000. And we also got into the law that the occupancy tax, overall, we'd have to, you know, the expenditures of the occupancy tax would have to be similar to where the taxes were generated from. So that's sort of the incentive behind moving forward. So we got the county after negotiations with the county, and we had to do some negotiations with them, because it's a county law, and not all towns enjoy the occupant, or the amount of overnight accommodations, as North Elba does. So, you know, over 80% of the oc tax in Essex County is generated in North Elba. So we got through that process, which led us down to the state, because we had had the state-enabling legislation change. So we then went to the state, the Assembly and the Senate. We got, we worked closely with them, and they passed both of those houses. And then we had to take it to the governor's office to sign. That was a process, but we finally got that, was completed at the end of 2019, which brought it back to the county for the county to do a local law to implement. We had about three or four more months of negotiations with the county to make sure that this ended up where we thought, where we identified it should end up at the very beginning, on how we can utilize these funds predominantly in North Elba to do community enhancement. So that brought us to, we completed that with the county in, really, just about the beginning of March of 2020. And then all of a sudden COVID hit. So the county delayed starting it, but they started in June 1. Right after June 1 is, that's when the law was implemented, the additional 2% was being collected to go into this fund, which is a countywide fund called the Community Tourism Enhancement Fund, the North Elba portion, we're now calling LEAF. Then we put together a committee that started in, I think, the end of September, to really put the guidelines together on how this process will work. And now we have both a website and a document that MJ, I told Anita we would send to her so she could send to all the village's board members on our leaflet. I called it a booklet, didn't I, Val? Our leaflet, that lays out the whole program. And it's pretty thorough. We had a committee of 11 people that consisted of Catherine Beemis from St. Agnes, Dick Cummings was the town rep, Art Devlin was the village rep, Matt Dunnehugh from the Adirondack Foundation, Chris Erickson, MJ and myself, Andrew Mullen from Saranac Waterfront Lodge, Val Rogers, Jen Webb, Andrew Wybrick. And we left one position open for the new community development position, that when that person is identified, they will come onto this committee. We've laid out a timeline and the process for the whole program. I don't think we should get into that now, but we will send you a printed copy, and also a web, a link to a website. But town board just approved it. How this process will work, the committee will vent and do due diligence on applications that come in. They will make recommendations to the town board. The town board will then do final approvals on any grants. As far as the revenues, you know, the original plan, when we originally put this in place, we're basing it on 2018 and 2019 collections. The money available for, within the town in North Elba, originally, the projection was about 1.2 million. That, of course, did not happen in 2020, that we're going to be looking at probably about 600,000 this first year that we'll have available for granting of nonprofits, public sector, or governments, is what's been identified. And as we, our projections for 2021 is that we'll be getting closer to that million-dollar number, depending on what happens with COVID over the next six months. But as we get back in this, to where we were, it should be right in the area of 1.2 to 1.4 million annually. What's good about this, and what's exciting for all of us that have been engaged in it, this is an ongoing funding stream that will be dedicated for community enhancement. Mary Jane?
James, I think that you pretty much covered it. I just wanted to mention two things. One is that in the leaflet that we will, you know, that I'll forward to Anita, just know that, you know, we have done our due diligence to really put this program together as thoroughly as possible. With that said, we know that there'll be things coming our way that we didn't anticipate, and we know that we're going to have to be, you know, agile through the first year in order to really fine-tune this program. Second thing is, I would be remiss if we didn't mention what an incredible job that the committee has done. There was 11 to 12 committee meetings that we have posted, and everybody's come to the table with suggestions, ideas, direction. And it's really been one of the better committees I've ever worked with. So I just want to make sure we take a minute to thank everybody that participated in putting this program together. And we're here to answer any questions. I know it's hard, because you don't have all the detailed information, but we will send that to Anita, and you're welcome to reach out anytime with any questions or suggestions, ideas, you know. Everything's on the table, and we want to be very transparent through this whole process. It's for the community. And we're excited.
So MJ, just a quick question. So you're saying that this pool of money, this subcommittee that Jim had mentioned, is going to oversee the application process?
The way that it's going to work is the applications will come in, and we have an admin that's going to make sure that the applications are complete. If there's any missing pieces, they're going to, she'll reach out to the applicant, make sure the applications are complete, and then they'll go to the committee for review. We'll make the recommendations, what we perceive as being, you know, fitting the criteria of the fund, and to the town board for final approval.
So would that destination management plan, would that, would that fit under the sort of, the purview of this particular fund as a way to kind of, what you had mentioned, and Jim had mentioned, as being critical, kind of setting the groundwork for the future of Lake Placid, having this management plan? Is that, would the funds be able to be used from that?
It could be. An applicant, go ahead, Jim.
I said it could be, but we're not sure that it's best to kick it off with that. We might have to, we might look at other resources, but I don't know. I mean, somebody has to.
Well, we're not a non-for-profit, so it would have to be an applicant from another entity, other than Roost.
No, I understand the optics of it, per se, that you don't.
Yeah, but we don't want.
Funds for something, for the funds.
We need to get a little money out of the village and a little money out of the town, Jason, to make that happen. But we've put some in our operating budget for next year for that. Not all of it, but in our general operations. This money, this 2% is segregated from our budget. It comes in, it has a separate accounting, a whole separate account. It's totally separated, different from the Roost's normal budget.
Okay. I was just hoping that we could work our way back to that destination plan. It's so critical with the way the world is changing, and how COVID is forcing the change, and we need to get in front of that, otherwise, we're going to be playing catch-up for the next decade.
I agree 100%.
Jim, can you?
We're all in agreement on that.
Can you, can you describe what the committee feels might be typical types of applications that you'd receive?
Well, we don't, we've broken it down. We have categories that we've identified, under 10,000 or under $9,999, between 10 and 50, and then over 50. Over 50 triggers a little different application process. But we don't really know what to expect. The plan is that we will start the marketing of this to the North Elba community. I say North Elba, because we have to include that section of Saranac Lake Village that's in North Elba. We'll start that probably, I'm thinking, MJ, maybe the week between Christmas and New Year's, or if not then, the first, the very first day after New Year's, if we don't. We've got it pretty well together. We haven't done the completed marketing plan on it, but it's pretty well. The website's done, the application's done, the leaflet's done.
Seems like a lot of good work has been done.
Been a lot of good work. It's been amazing, the committee work, and everybody really kicked in very diligently. We had 11 meetings over the last 11 weeks.
And I think, and MJ and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think to just add a little more clarity to your question, Jason, is for the destination management plan, Roost could not apply, because they're not a not-for-profit, but municipalities are able to apply for funding for special projects. Nobody can apply for operating costs, standard operating costs, but things that are special projects would qualify. So the municipality could maybe apply for that funding as a special project, and you're not a not-for-profit. MJ and Jim, is that, did I, is that correct?
Roost is a nonprofit, but I think, as Jason said, the optics of less applying might not be best.
Right.
Well, we can't, Jim.
Could a foundation, the Rotary Foundation, apply if it's a capital improvement to the town, like a bus shelters program, for example?
Sure.
Thank you.
That's exact.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Val.
I would think that would might be a fairly common and typical type of application that might be received. Another might be services that are not presently fully supported. So I think it'll be interesting to see how the community responds. But my sense is that organizations are going to take note of this, and I believe will, I think you'll be successful in attracting applications.
And I guess I should correct, it's not that Roost can't apply because of the profit or not-for-profit status, it's because Roost is the one managing the fund, right? Is that what you're saying, MJ? Why you can't apply?
Well, two, I mean, right, we couldn't apply because we're managing the funds, but two, we're not a not-for-profit.
Yes, we, yes, we are. We're 501(c)(6). It's a nonprofit.
Well.
At any rate, the.
The optics aren't right. Maybe in the future, if it's a specific program, we would.
But even through that example, you could apply for this fund, so.
I don't think we will.
But we don't, we don't want to, because of the optics, but it would qualify, okay?
Roost does have other resources that are not for profit, however, so.
Right.
It's probably a moot issue, but I think Jason's point, the DMP is a Roost project, and funding is, it's a community benefit-type project that I think we're all interested in. And it needs to be funded.
Certainly, the village and town could apply for a portion of that, and we could cover a portion. That would certainly be something that could work.
Frankly, I'm thinking about having the village apply for funding to correct an issue with the village beach dock, which is floating on polystyrene and needs to be placed into a capsule. It's going to be an expensive project.
Yeah, the town board also brought that up today, by the way, Mayor.
I'm not surprised. I think we're all with interest.
So a quick question for you guys. Is this fund like a fiscal sponsor fund? So not only could somebody apply for monies for a capital improvement, but you would also manage the project account and the monies associated in that project account? Or does that, or do you look to somebody else to be the fiscal sponsor?
I'm not sure what you mean by fiscal sponsor, but we will, we will be monitoring any grants that go out and making sure they're completed, as we said. But we, we will, you know, we are, we do have fiscal responsibility for the money.
For the money, okay. It'd be good to do a follow-up conversation, because the Lake Placid Rotary Club just established a foundation, a 501(c)(3). We've got four projects on the board's table right now that we're considering. One is a yes, but it might be, you know, some good way for us to help each other out, anyway. We don't have the funding, but we manage the funding once they receive it, in a tax, in a tax-deductive way.
Well, we're not set up, you don't have to be a 501(c)(3) to apply for this. You have to be, it can be a 501(c)(6) or whatever. It doesn't have to be a charitable nonprofit.
Gotcha. I'll follow up with you, Mary Jane, just so we can talk through it a little bit more. There might be some interesting things that are arriving on our plate that you might want to take consideration of as well, for the foundation, the Rotary Foundation. Anyway, thank you.
Well, I think from our perspective in the village, we can, we can extend a hearty thank you to the committee that has worked on this project. And it's certainly, Jim, I remember when you and I first talked about it, probably two years ago now. So it takes time sometimes for these projects to get alike. And, but I think this, this one has merit and doesn't leverage our property owners unduly, you know, in a way that might cause them some anguish. So thank you for your presentation on this. We'll look forward to receiving the leaflet. I think that's a really interesting acronym for the organization. And we look forward to seeing new leaves in the spring.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your meeting. We appreciate your time very much.
Thank you very much. Kate, I think you're next, and you're all welcome to stay on board if you'd like. Kate, I think it's going to talk about some of the work that we're trying to do to move the village into a more, we use the word transparent a lot, but hopefully.
I would love to stay on, but I got to go back to work, so. Have a good presentation, Kate. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Val. Okay, so Anita, I'm in through the app now. So I don't know if you make me the presenter, if I can share. We might have an operating system in combat, in compatibility issue.
Yeah.
For Mac and go-to meeting, but we'll see. And if we do, I'll just talk through the changes that we're making.
Okay, so I just made you the presenter, Kate, so let's see, let's see where we're going with this.
I don't, I don't think there's anything for me to do. I have no screen options that are popping up. Yeah, okay.
Wait, hold on, hold on, let me do one more thing.
Okay.
Did that change anything for you?
I can see this now, yes.
Okay, so maybe now, I just have to get back to where, so maybe now you have to control it and bring the screen back.
The issue is, there's no command or button for me to be able to control the screen. I think it's a known issue. So I'll just describe what we're doing. How does that sound?
We'll do as we want.
Great, but now let me try to get back to where we were, because now, now, now nobody's seeing anything. So. Sorry about this.
Oh, wait a minute. Nope. All I can do is make the screen larger and smaller. I can't, I can't share anything.
Okay.
It's really weird. Okay. My husband says it's a known problem. I believe him.
Okay. I'm just trying to get our screen back to where it was now, and. I mean, you can all, you can still talk, Kate.
Okay, I'll go ahead and do that. So thank you, everybody, for allowing me to come on and share just a little bit of the progress we've been making on the communications committee and with respect to the website. And I will send some, a package of information out to Anita afterwards, so she can distribute it to all of you, in case you would like to actually see some things. So let me say first that we've kind of circled around a simpler way to present information for both the town and the village to the public. And what we'd like to do is really take all of the main menu options that we have, both in the town and in the village, and the village is quite a few of them, including all the quick links, there's like 27 altogether, and really boil it down into five categories: government, community, departments, how-do-I, and visiting. And, and also be able to provide an area for hot buttons, for hot topics that people need to access, like COVID-19, or maybe emergency, or maybe projects that the town and or village are working on, transportation options, et cetera. So basically, what we've done is we've created an information category flow underneath each of these five main categories, what would belong there. And from there, we're creating these little projects that allow us to move information around and are updated, so it flows more like we think it should from the five main categories. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay. So for example, let me give you, we're working on a couple of projects, so we're going to start with a couple of small ones, and I'll describe them to you. If you have a chance to go on to the village webpage, the village homepage, you will see that there's this main menu option called Departments. Underneath Departments is Accounting and Billing. Doing a little bit of research on accounting and billing, well, let me just stop there. And also, under Quick Links, there's three documents. There's the Budget, the audited reports for last fiscal year, and the annual Village Report for 2019. So what we're doing is we're growing the Accounting and Billing Department to be Accounting and Finance, so that we can more accurately represent Mindy Goddose's scope of responsibility as a Chief Financial Officer of the Village, and also pull in financial reports into that page. The net effect is, we reduce the number of quick links, but we also put all the information regarding accounting and finance for the village in one place. So that's an example of a project we're in the process of. Another example is, on the Quick Links section of the homepage, you'll see that there's this word that says Courts. You click there, you get a landing page, and then you have to do another click to get the Village Justice Court page. The town has a different approach. Right under Departments, they have a Town Court option. So what we're doing to make the village and the town more alike and more in line with where we think we're going to eventually land, is we're going to create a new Court Department page for the village, just like the town has a Court Department page. And those two pages, because they're separate but equal jurisdictions, will mirror each other. In other words, have the same content on them. So that will effectively reduce, between those two projects, we're taking four things off Quick Links, as an, as an example. So that's the kind of work we're doing right now. We also have another main menu option that we're working on called Community. Again, this is one of our terminal kind of information buckets we want for the new platform. The town already has a community option, the village does not. So we're rationalizing between the two, and we're pulling things that, off the Quick Links menu, that would normally fit under Community, like educational facilities, for example, or history, or Housing Assistance Program of Essex County. The net effect of all of this work is that the town and the village websites will have a more similar organization. They'll be linked across each other, where they should be linked for easier navigation, and we'll be preparing the town, the court web, the village website to go onto the new platform without a lot of effort.
That's, that's a tremendous advancement, and as you pointed out, without having to build the whole new platform, it's a pretty efficient upgrade that I think we appreciate the effort and the leadership that you've given the committee.
Thank you.
Moving ahead, in the beginning, this sounded like it was going to be a big and largely a brand-new undertaking. And I think where you certainly take in the village, I'll speak to the village, that these steps will offer our community and our residents and visitors alike an easier path to get information that they want. I think that's good. I think the idea of the accounting and finance is good, and being able to produce the financial information for the community that they should be able to access. If they can do it simply, in that manner, I think that's a good step toward better transparency.
My only, I apologize, Mayor. My only concern is that the branding between the two. Many people confuse Lake Placid and North Elba. When they all, we all have the 12946 area code, but when it comes to municipal services, there is incredible confusion, unless you are a local here and you know exactly. So my, I'm apprehensive in that, you say there's a court page that mirror, if they're too mirror, too mirrored, and the branding is similar, it might sow confusion as opposed to streamlining that.
So that's a great point, Jason. In terms of the branding, we're, putting the courts aside for a second, where we can really rationalize that and, and really position everything as Lake Placid is on the new platform. Right now, we have two physically separate platforms. We're not able to do that.
Okay.
So what we're doing instead is, we're reorganizing the information on each of the platforms so they're more alike in the flow and the end-user experience. We're also cross-linking pages, so that if somebody lands on, I'll just make it up, a village court page, but they really need the town court page, they can just click the town court page from the village court page without having to go back to the town website.
Makes sense, makes sense.
So that's the kind of work we're doing right now. When we get to the, hopefully, the new platform, we'll be able to present this as Lake Placid, supported by both Town of North Elba and Village of Lake Placid. And it'll be much more end-user-friendly presentation of the information. And the final pages might have different branding on the bottom to say, one's village, one's town. So it's not the first thing that the end-user sees, it's sort of like the last thing they see.
Yeah, I just, so for instance, just kind of go back to the branding component. Let's just say at the header of the page. Yeah, I just, so for instance, just kind of go back to the branding component. Let's just say at the header of the page, and if it's, if it's really, if you aren't quick to differentiate between, am I, am I looking for a village or town? That's why I want to minimize that particular, and how you make them interrelate in a, in a visually aesthetic, pleasing aesthetic that's similar, but it still differentiates them, it might minimize confusion. That's what I say.
Yeah, and they are.
At the bottom.
Yep, they're still going to look different today, right now. They're going to look different because the platforms are different. So you will know. In the end, in the future, yes, yes. And that's part of the design we'll have to just work through. But we're trying to do the heavy lift right now with the reorganizing and the refloing of the information. Because that's harder to do than some of the branding. The branding's straightforward. The courts are different, though. The courts are separate, yet equal jurisdictions. So they must remain separate by New York state law, separate pages. The FAQs that are going, the new FAQs that are going up on the Town of North Elba page say Town of North Elba Traffic Court FAQ. The similar one for Village says Village of Lake Placid Traffic Court FAQ. The Town Court page says Town Court as its header. The Village page says Village Justice Court. So we have to keep the naming consistent with the current jurisdictions. We're not for the court pages. You know, there's more constraints that we need to be able to support because they are separate, yet equal jurisdictions.
Jason is probably going to go on for some time, maybe someday. I doubt that I'll see it, but maybe someday the village and town will be one. But as you know, there are impediments that always appear to keep that from happening. But I think, I think it's very difficult for people that live in the 12946 footprint and get their mail, their addresses Lake Placid regardless of the fact that they don't live in Lake Placid.
That's, that's the major sort of obstacle is that, as, as we introduce, or as we welcome newer and newer residents, getting them acclimated to the new two municipalities and what the two municipalities actually oversee and facilitate.
It's hard. It's, it's confusing. So in the background, I'm, I'm also in the process of drafting the RFI, RFP. That'll start circulating broader, probably after the holiday for input. But the thought is, we want to put out the RFI, RFP in January, have different companies who provide government website platforms respond to it and give us demonstrations so that we can get, and also an estimate of cost, so we can work that into the village budget. I, I did hear from Emily that Kathy Edmund has put money aside in the town budget already for 2021, because that's a calendar year, fiscal year as well. Because we are expecting, we're hoping that we can start some of the new platform work, maybe sometime later, second quarter next year. So that will also be coming out in January for everybody to react to, and then we'll, we'll determine how to send it out. So that's basically what's going on with the website at the moment. And we have other projects in the queue, like the new community main menu option, the how-do-I main menu option. So we're working on things in the background as well that will eventually come to the foreground. So you'll, you'll see, you'll see this menus, the menu and the Quick Links in the village change quite a bit. Hopefully, it'll be less of them, and, and less of them for everybody to look at.
But most important, see them where you should see them, which, which is within that link itself, is when, when it's germane to that function such as the courts.
Yep.
It makes, it makes a lot of sense and, and it addresses the frustration with the current website that the village uses. It's, it's, has a lot, it, it, there's a lot of links there, but they're not always easy to figure out.
The, the one last thing that we're trying that's new, and Anita asked that we just test this with you, is that the Communications Subcommittee is recommending that we put up a projects landing page. This would give the village and the town, if they decide to adopt it, an opportunity to be able to share information about large strategic projects as they're about to be implemented, such as the Main Street upgrade or the Peacock Park upgrade. So we have a straw man of a projects landing page. It links to the Development Commission. The thought is, we, the thought is to have the projects really start with information about a specific set of activities, like Main Street, just before it's about to implement. And it references back to the Development Commission pages for all the planning activities. And then underneath that, each project would have its own sub-page, like a Main Street Upgrade Subpage, or a Peacock Park Upgrade Subpage, et cetera. I've got screenshots of that, so I'll, with Anita's help, package that up and send it out. Would love to get your, everybody's feedback on the idea and the content and the links.
I think we look forward to seeing that.
Okay.
Would that, would that page in particular provide some sort of a level of interactivity where individuals could leave a comment, not within the website, but message the village and regarding a particular issue, just so we can crowdsource some of the oversight or issues?
I, I gotta look at the platform capabilities, Jason. I'm not sure that it has incoming engagement feed input-type capabilities, but there is definitely an ability for someone to provide their email address so that we can create a listserv. And what the system will do is every time the page is updated, they will send out an email to that subscriber saying, hey, the page is updated. You want to go look at it? So we're trying to work at least that piece into it. I don't know about the input piece. I, I don't recall any functionality like that on the current platform, but we'll go with it.
Well, very minimum, if you have that piece where it's updated, and it, if there is a particular part of the project that's starting, that we'd like the community to know that, a mass email, then all of a sudden, the information's in everyone's hands. So we don't have to rely on the newspaper or just a static Facebook page or whatever.
Yeah, and behind the scenes, too, we've, we're working on a Main Street Upgrade Communications Plan so that takes into consideration how to get information out to people. A project sub-page is just one location to put information that the village, from a governmental point of view, wants to make sure end-users or the public understands, the community understands. It's not meant to replace what Roost or the Business Association may do with visitors and/or from a retail perspective, it's meant to complement it. So there'll be probably some interactions at some point between pages when we get a little further down the road. We're still kind of, I think, trying to work through that. So we're gonna, we're gonna crawl before we work, walk. I think, Anita, right, we said, let's start with maybe one or two strategic projects first. See how it goes. Learn what we need to do.
There might be some changes to the website by the end of the week. Kate has been doing a lot of this work that neither myself nor my predecessor nor the other person who used to run the website had time to really dig deep and work on. So it's always been a very surface thing. She's really made a lot of changes or potential changes that will be streamlining things and making more, make sense. Then you might even see some by the end of the week if I push that button, so.
And let us know when you see the changes, you know, give us input. Let us, ideas are great. Even if you have ideas on different things with the current website, please don't hesitate to send Anita any email or myself. We're all ears. This, this is more of an art than it is necessarily a science. So we just want to, we do want to use the KISS principle, though, and kind of make it simple and clear overall, and very friendly to the end-user, which would mean it will be friendly and easier to update from a publishing point of view, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kate. I think you've given us a, a, a really good image of some work that is not always easy for everybody to get their arms around. Thank you for that. This is going to be a work, a short work session because my mind, the last two days, has really been unpacking boxes and freight. So is there any items that anyone else wants to bring up this afternoon during this work session or questions that you have? If not, it'll be the shortest work session on record. I'll go back to my house where I have a large tractor trailer and with all, all the furnishings they've taken out of our house, they still haven't gotten halfway back to the door. It's amazing how they pack those things. It's really not his girl.
I was gonna say, stay warm. It's chilly out there.
Okay, so Scott, anything you want to bring up? Jason, anything else on your mind?
No, sir.
We do have, we do have one point, Scott.
We used to get the accounts collateral thing every month.
I'll speak with Mindy about, a lot of this stuff has been caught up in the transition from nine to 10. And I think Mindy's, Mindy's got a lot on her plate. We've cut her a little bit.
I guess I don't want to keep going too far and then.
No, 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 we don't. You're right. And we can, we can certainly, I can ask her to produce one, even if, even if it's not, she's not.
It'd just be nice to get once in a while.
Because actually, I think, I think the banks generate that to us monthly at any event. So we'll, I'll look into that for you and we'll, we'll at least get a current report out of that. There's a, there's a number of things in the, in the accounting and finance area. Obviously, we haven't been seeing regular budget reports, and that's part of the upgrade, and, and she's still working on refining different aspects, I guess, of Incode 10. We, we want to be sure we've got it all up and running before we put out information. I know I did ask her for one off-the-cop budget report, and, and when I looked at it, I realized that we were, we were midstream and we had a horse on, we had, we had our feet on two horses. So we'll, but I'll, I'll take that up with her and we'll get that for you. Jason, anything else?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Kim, you're on. Is there anything going on in your area that you wanted to speak about?
Mayor, I'm unmuted, I think. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um. Are we all set for the generator to be on the next Village Board agenda?
Yes, as far as I know, that can be done. This is a, this is a portable generator that would be funded from IDEP funding, which will be used to, well, I'll take my own expense. Well, I was wondering what it was, 26 below zero, and our electric fee went down. And that night, they were lucky that there was another pad mounted transformer within a few feet that they could patch me into. But generally speaking, that's not the case. So having a portable generator that they could set up and, and keep somebody energized until they can finish the work. And maybe not have to be out at 26 below zero until six o'clock in the morning. It was a bad night. But I, it, Kimball, it, it certainly is a, it's certainly a proposal that I think will receive good, good response from the board members. So we'll, we'll, we'll get it on the agenda for you. Have we got what we need? Have you got what, what Anita would need to get it on, Kim?
I, I will just send it to her in the morning so she has it fresh.
Okay, that's, that's, that's timely.
Okay.
Good. By the way, Kimball, the outcome with the village Christmas tree is spectacular. I think it's the best-looking tree. I think it rivals the one in, what's, what's that city called? New York City? Definitely, definitely a nice, nice-looking presentation this year.
Yeah, I came in Sunday to get some pictures in front of it, so it looks very good.
I got the story behind how the white lights ended up on it. I told the guys, colored lights, get them on and make sure you do it early so we can order additional. But then when they went to do it, there was a barrel that's full of lights that said Mids Park. So I think they forgot everything and just focused on the barrel that said Mids Park. They were white lights, so.
The, the nice thing is that Sharice, you, you, you guys got some good weather this year, which made a big difference. And Sharice got on it and, and got on the village decoration, so. But when the question came up about what color lights in Mayor's office, I'm going like, I'm not going to be responsible for what we use for lights. So we went to the appearance committee. And, but, but it was kind of interesting because everybody kind of got on the page. And what turned out, partly by accident, was probably one of the best-lighted trees we've ever had. So thank you, Kim. The, the errors are accepted and we're all happy.
That's all I have.
No, I don't. And then Kate covers things from my end. Then Peter on there in case you don't know.
Okay. Peter, is there anything you wish to bring up?
Nope, that's not, not today.
Okay, no, and I think we're, we're moving forward. So if, if there's nothing else on the agenda, and I apologize, but my mind has been on some other work. But our next session will be a Village Board meeting.
Okay, we'll see you all then if not sooner. I guess, one of you can come in to do the award Friday afternoon or Monday.
Sounds good. I'll, I'll do it this week, whether it's Monday or.
Peter might appreciate that.
Sure thing.